Good evening. We will call this city commission meeting on September 8th, 2025 to order. And can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
All right, we will have our invocation by Jacob Newton from High Springs Church of God, followed by the pleas of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time that is set aside to make decisions about our city here in High Springs. I lift up our city commission and city staff to you, ask that you would give them wisdom and direction, give them clarity. I pray, Lord, that they'd be able to lead our city well and continue to govern it with with great wisdom and direction. And, Lord, we ask that for those that are present, that, Lord, that their their hearts and minds would be turned towards the best interests of our city and what allows for our city to move forward. We give you praise and we give you thanks for it all. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the consent agenda, one and two?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, one and two.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Special presentations. We will start with the proclamation declaring Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Tristan Grunder, Mayor of the City of High Springs, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals which the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of High Springs to be affixed this eighth day of September, 2025. Tristan Grunder, Mayor. And we will move on to the presentation of our High Springs hero, set up by our own Commissioner, Catherine White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, we all agreed that between now and Veterans Day, we would be introducing our community to some local heroes. And I would, I'm absolutely honored to introduce a gentleman who unfortunately can't be here tonight because he was feeling unwell. But he is a Vietnam War veteran by the name of Mr. Robert Lee Wallace, and he lives here in High Springs. Mr. Mr. Robert Lee Wallace is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, having served in country during the Vietnam War. Mr. Wallace was wounded in battle in two separate instances and was awarded the Purple Heart twice. The Purple Heart is a U.S. military decoration awarded to service members who are wounded, killed, or die in action while serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. Established in 1932, the medal's origins trace back to the badge of military merit created by George Washington in 1782 for exceptional bravery and service, and today it remains a symbol of courage, sacrifice, and the high cost of freedom. We are honored to have this opportunity to share Mr. Wallace's personal story and thank him for his service and his sacrifice. He's not here to share his story. I sat with him in his living room for quite a while, and he's absolutely a delightful human being. His his love for life is unparalleled, and I can tell you that his first wound was when he was hiding in a hollow tree and realized there was somebody else there in the tree with him who had a hand grenade. And he, as he tried to exit the tree, he took a piece of shrapnel to the neck and survived that, went back to serve in active combat, and was shot 27 times, one of them going through his heart. And he he lived to tell about it. He was in the hospital for a long time, as many Purple Heart recipients are, and he absolutely loves High Springs. So I'm hoping that one day when he's feeling a little bit better, he'll be able to come and introduce himself, but staff made up a beautiful certificate for him. Thank you very much, and I will be more than happy to present this to him in person, and and we look forward to learning about a new High Springs hero at the next meeting. So we thank Mr. Wallace for his absolute service and sacrifice, and we rest our heads easy because of him.
He may not be here, but he still reserves. That's remarkable. Thank you for that, and thank him for his service. Moving on to budget one, discuss, consider, and act on resolution 2025-k.
Diane Wilson, Finance Director. This is a brief item. We had discussed the millage rate going from 6.74 to 6.99, and that is what this resolution will do. We are required to, you'll probably recall this from last year, we have to read a few items to be specific. Kirsten will read the resolution also. Do you want me to run through this first, or do you want to? Would you like to read the resolution first, and then I'll just run through the information, whatever you prefer?
If you want to start with the information, then when we go to the vote, we'll do the resolution.
Okay, thank you. So again, these are items we're required to read at the hearing. For the City of High Springs, the proposed tentative millage rate is 6.99 mils. The rolled back rate, which I'll talk about in the next slide, is 6.3438, which is a 10.19% increase. The 6.99 is a 1 point, a 10.19 increase over the 6.3438. So a lot of numbers here going on, but basically the rolled back rate is a calculation of what we would have to set the millage at today with the new property values to recover the same amount of property tax we got last year. So last year, we got 3.478480 in property tax, and since the value of our property went up, we could use a lower millage rate, the 6.3438, to still get that same amount of money. By keeping it at 6.99 and assuming we'll collect 98.5%, the very bottom right is what's in the budget, the 3.946495. And our final public hearing date will be two weeks from tonight here at 6:30. And that is it. There's a separate item for the budget and another item for the utility rates, so those are independent of this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, so this is simply just the millage rate. It's not specific questions about the budget. That comes later?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any Commissioner comments? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I'll I'll read the resolution into the record.
Okay.
Resolution 2025-k, resolution of the City Commission of the City of High Springs, Florida, relating to the levy of general municipal purpose ad valorem taxes for the 2025-2026 fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, establishing a tentative millage rate, setting a public hearing, providing for the publication of notice, and providing an immediate effective date.
We have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept 2025-k as read.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. Angela, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Moving on to budget number two, discuss, consider, and act on ordinance 2025-05.
All right, good evening. So this is your first up-two budget hearings that you will get. So this is the same budget you've seen throughout the year. We did a bunch of budget workshops. We did 10 of them between May and August to get you caught up on the numbers and what you're actually looking at. Here's the challenges that we faced this year. We've heard it many times. We had a sewer deficit of 620, and there's no reserves, a fire deficit of 103, local option gas taxes being used by the general fund and not roads, utility transfers to the general fund are too high impacts to service levels. We were talking about that the last meeting, how you wanted service levels impacted, and what the overall costs would be to the citizens. Here's the scenarios that you were looking at last last meeting. You cited as a commission to go with scenario number one, which is raising the sewer rate, 2425, raising the millage rate, and then the fire assessment rate, which went up at the last meeting. So when we're talking about your utility rates, you've already voted last month to raise them 2425 to cover the sewer budget deficit. It's just below $300 a month. I think I added up. It was 291. It's what's going to cost each household. The water rates and the wastewater rates are staying the same, and what we did increase in the water system, remember, we were talking about when construction uses the our flow, our hydrant meter, what we charged them as a deposit has increased, and so did the rates. Our impact fees increased for water and sewer, and no changes were made to the solid waste. The increase to your millage rate went from 6.74 to 6.99. This allows us to cover what we were facing with the with the fire deficit. The cost to each citizen, if we average about a $300,000 house to kind of make the numbers easy, that would be about $75 a year for the millage rate. No changes were made for the sewer, water, wastewater, or local option gas tax. Those are the same as what you saw during our budget discussions. Here's how the personnel impacted the budget. At the last meeting, you voted for 3% raises for all employees except for the police. They're under a separate one because we're going through negotiations with the union, and we voted to raise that up to a competitive rate. Last meeting, city commission cut their salaries by 25%. One of the big things that impacted this year is FRS for police and fire went up 2.4%. When you have as, you know, as much as we do as fire and police, that was a pretty hard hit, and then the health insurance increased by 5%. So the revenues are pretty much the same as you see. I want to point out a couple areas on here. You see the revenue for ad valorem tax, the big jump from last year. This year is your, the increase in property taxes we get through the year and the increase in your millage rate. Down, and I wanted to point this out, the last meeting, you approved to go into a lease with swamp bots, that 6,000, we did not put in there yet because we don't have a lease. And now miscellaneous revenue, you'll see a big jump in our projections compared to what we're budging, and that's because that 148,527 in miscellaneous revenue, that is FEMA and insurance paybacks, like that, the parking wreck truck that burned up our insurance payments. That's where that gets captured. The expenses are all the same as what you've seen throughout the year, except for a couple highlights. You see a small increase in the human resources. That's our paycheck software. You see a bigger increase down in the police. That's the raises that we calculated, that we talked about, and then in planning and code, you see the big expenditures. That's the LDC rewrite is caught in there. So that's why you see the big increase there. Next is your transfers. You have your fire transfer that goes to general fund, 1.1, and then your CRA TEF is half what we, half is Austin, the other half is the county, and that's 171,000. So when you're looking at your budget, your your revenue matches your operating expenses. It's a balanced budget. Your fire budget. So you, underneath the revenue, Lautre County revenue, that 197, that's the projected now with Station 21 open, we will get a reduction in what we get from the county. Best guess is 197. It comes from Austin, the county. You see an increase in your fire assessment. That's the increase that you passed at the last meeting. You go down to other revenue, you see that the high numbers are there. That's your sale of the heavy rescue. And then go down to total capital. That's your new truck that's being built right now, and what you've seen projected, that's what we've paid so far to that that truck that's being built. Next is your sewer budget. The, so the previous years, you use your infrastructure, pay for your grinders and what's off. We used that to balance the budget last year, which I don't like. Down in capital, if you see, you got 638,000. That's what we talked about, that press that we need for the sewer plant to push the water out of the biosolids. That's where that's at. Your 180 grand that's left over is your grinder pumps. There's, go ahead, no real changes to your water budget other than the person, go ahead and next one. From the previous year. Solid waste, the only thing that I want to explain, this one is total personnel. We kind of reevaluated where people spend their time, and we've split out of the solid waste. You see the increase because we put some of Jason's time and some of Mike's time from public works goes towards solid waste, so you'll see the increase there, but decrease other other places. No changes to your local option gas tax. No real changes to your building fund from what you've seen through workshops throughout the year, and no changes to your CRA budget. Your next meeting for the budget hearing will be two weeks from today, September 22nd. That's where you'll get the second reading of the budget ordinance and make your final millage rate vote. Any questions on the first first look at the budget?
Do we have any Commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, back for solid waste.
Sure.
The 26 projections, 77,000, and the budget was 9,000. What was that? That's a big difference editing.
Go ahead. I'm pulling it up.
Commissioner, that is what is your residual at the end of the year between your revenues and your expenses. So we're projecting that we would have a balance of 77,534 at the end of '25 to the positive, and based on our estimates for '26, we would have $9,000. There's a lot of discussion, obviously, about the garbage contracts still, so we didn't make any reductions in the '26 budget because of that surplus, because we still don't really know what's going on. So we can always, once the new contract comes into place, make the adjustments like we talked about before.
Mr. Mayor, can I piggyback on that question?
Absolutely.
In terms of solid waste, however, it's intended to be an enterprise fund. It's not intended to be something that has significant reserves, because we can't, we're not supposed to be transferring it out, except for a small percentage for administrative costs. And the same is true for water, wastewater, and roads. Those are enterprise funds. However, building up reserves there is is the goal right now because we have none.
Right.
If something goes wrong with solid waste, that's a contractor. It's something completely different. So the $9,000 really shouldn't concern us, I guess, is my question?
No, and like I said, we we know there's going to be a change coming, so, and and that's really, that's your, that's your balancing factor. We didn't have any additional expenses that we knew about at this time. We know what we should be getting in revenue based on our number of customers and the types and all those things. So that was, you know, as close as we got for budget based on that information. But again, as we go forward and get a new contract, we'll know if we need to use those reserves or not.
And is this the appropriate time to ask specific questions about this budget printout? Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
We've got expense line items here, soccer expenses, volleyball expenses, softball, baseball. Are we, are we spending that money, or is that pass-through money?
It's pass-through.
So that is self-sustaining. The the money, the city is not losing money.
The sport expenses?
Yes.
Those are just pass-through.
Okay, so that's pass-through, so it's, I mean, it's.
We spend a little on soccer. I think there's one of them that we spend a little bit on, but no, the rest of those are pass-through.
Okay, so those are not, I mean, they're listed as an expense just because it is an expense, but it's not necessarily one the city bears.
Because it goes through, we still have to account for it, even if it's a pass-through.
Okay. And in finance, the salaries have gone up 5%, but I thought we had cut one position. Are you going to be replacing Dre Lynn?
We will be.
Okay, well, then that makes sense. I wasn't sure about that. The professional services projection has gone down quite a bit. Is that, what is the professional services?
Professional services is our financial advisor that we have retain every year, 6,000. It is our consultant that's been helping us untangle the finances and the auditors.
So that's where we pay for the independent audit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we have two, parts of two in this year, and then next year, we should just have 25s.
Okay. Nonroutine services for the attorney, I would just like to point out, for fiscal year 2025, the nonroutine fee that we have calculated here is $19. So Kirsten and Danielle, thank you. That has not always been the case, and I really appreciate that. The cost for our lobbyist went up quite a bit, 33.6 to 42.
The PR academic is in there also.
What's that?
The PR academic is in that line as well.
Oh, yeah.
PR academics are in other lines. I saw that. I wasn't sure what it was, but.
It's pre-academics. That is who I use. That's the consultant I've been using when we went through the initial things. That was helping me get through. That was that consultant that we put on about six months ago.
Okay.
That, that's one-on-one with me.
But this professional lobbyist, I'm assuming that's Andrew Kalal?
Andrew Kalal, yep.
So their their cost has gone up a bit from 33.6 to 42?
I put 3% in there for them, not knowing what their what their contract would be, but the other is the consultant.
And the social media website software, that's new because we we talked about that. I remember that coming up. So that's just a new expense. It's $7,500, but still, it's new.
We had pulled out, I'm sorry to interrupt, we had pulled out the PIO budget in '26 and enrolled what was general government's into the city manager's budget, and what was fire into the fire budget. So any of the software expenses that were captured in the PIO budget have been moved, that were for general government, have been moved over to the city manager's budget.
And the billing and tag office were projecting salaries to go down, so I assume we are not going to be hiring another full-time person. We're going to try to make do with what we have, I assume.
We're staffed now.
We're not fully staffed right now. We have, we still have a part-time that's open, but we always have some rotation, unfortunately. It's one of those high turnover positions. So we don't anticipate being fully staffed for an entire year at least.
And on the police budget, there's a line item here, Lautre County Dispatch Contract Services for $250,000. I didn't see a dispatch line item for fire. Do we not pay dispatch for fire?
We don't pay for fire.
How do we get that kind of deal with police? If we could, Mr. Mayor?
We don't get it.
I mean, that's a quarter of a million dollars. That's a big, big, how is it that we are able to not have to pay that for fire? Is that something the county is helping us with?
The county helps. That's, so tonight, you'll hear about some in-kind services that we get from the county.
Okay, okay.
One of them is we don't pay the dispatch for the county system, the radios, the medical supplies. The county gives a lot of in-kind services, and that's one of them.
Okay, so we can drill into that when we're talking about that, so, okay. And we have no more canine, chief?
We, we're optimistic to bring it back. We have some fillers out there, including with the mayor.
I know, I know Montana's gone, but man, having that that puppy at the school is just a game changer. So, okay, I think that's all the specific questions I had for now. Thank you.
Yeah, now, I did want to piggyback about sewer, so, I mean, solid waste. So although building reserves may not be on the top of the list, if we had reserve build up and we had changed the two companies, we wouldn't have been in the situation we're in now, right? Because we drained our reserves when we changed from one company to the other.
Correct.
So although we're saying, oh, it's not that important, it is important to have some money in reserves because, but you just said it wasn't as important.
Not as important, but it.
So it's important in the case of, we only got two companies. So tomorrow, they could say that they want to grow up by 100% as we dealt with before, and then we're in the hole again. So we should be trying to build reserves in that fund as well as any other fund. So it should be top of the list for any fund. If if there's a way to build it, we should be building it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can piggyback on that, if we have reserves in solid waste, are there allowable expenses that we could use that on? Other, I mean, since it's an enterprise fund, does it have to stay? Obviously, I I think there had been significant reserves built up in that fund, and when we switched contracts, a lot came to light that we never knew.
Well, when you switch the contracts, we didn't change the rates partway through the year. We used, this is years ago, used the reserve to offset raising the rate partially through the year when you went to the new contract. You guys kept the rate at the same for the rest of that year and used the reserves to fund that rate change.
To Mr. Vice Mayor's point, he's, he said in the past, if we can bring that down, that could be a potential savings we could pass off to our residents, because building up tremendous reserves there is not as important as in, I mean, it is important. I'm not saying it's not important, but we have a mechanism to pass on some savings potentially.
We could. The reason the 9,000, we're not overly concerned about the 9,000 is because we don't know what the contract's going to look like when we put it out and negotiate through. To Vice Mayor Miller's point, they could raise it 100% if they wanted, you know, they they both came with a reasonable number. So we we gave it the best guess based on the contract we have. When we get the new rate, that's when we'll take a look to see what what we're looking like for the solid waste.
Thank you.
I think we all agree that that getting money back in the bank is where we need to be. We got to start moving that way.
This isn't part of the budget discussion, but I've talked to many of you today. You were busy. Some of these buildings that we're trying to sell and whatnot, that's one-time money. That would be a good place to take that money and figure out how to divide it equitably amongst the funds to build those reserves back up. So for example, if we sold, and these are just arbitrary numbers, if we sold the Boy Scout Hut. if we sold the Boy Scout Hut for $200,000, we could put $50,000 into this reserve and just divvy that up. And as we sell buildings, we'll build that back, our reserves. And then when we do future budgets, the reserves, getting these reserves back to where we should be is going to be a priority.
Yeah. We just got to make sure we don't make the same mistakes we have in the past.
Mr. Mayor, please. So I just want to be, so I make sure I'm understanding the most. With the sewer budget, our revenues went down almost a million dollars. And that's because we were making transfers into sewer. We don't need to be doing that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question about if, if as we're selling properties and we're building up reserves, can we also use those revenues to pay down some debt?
You can do whatever you want with the money for the, for, if we sell a building. My, my suggestion would put it in the reserves because our reserves are so bad. But another method could be to pay down debt where I don't want to get, where I, where I'm trying to go with this is, you don't want to take one-time money. So we sell the Boy Scout Hut for $200,000 and put that towards the budget because that's only one time you're going to get it. So take it as a bonus. You weren't expecting it. We didn't budget for it, but now all of a sudden, we got $200,000 in here. What's the best? And we would, I would come to, when we sell something, I would come to the commission and ask how you'd want to go about it. If the commission wants to pay down some of our debt, that's great. That will, that will lower recurring expenses. Or we could put it in reserves. Equally as important.
Are we able to renegotiate the USDA loan that we have that's not paid off till 2043?
We can, but the interest rate on that is so low. It's 2. something percent. So the chances of us getting those interest, that interest rate, it's going to, no, not right now.
Okay.
It'd be nice to get rid of that.
Mr. Mayor?
It would be nice to get rid of that.
When you're talking about selling the properties, I know we've mentioned three properties. Our Boy Scout Hut is one, Canoe Outpost and Catholic Church. But the Canoe Outpost is doing us any good because it's all Wild Spaces money, correct? That doesn't help us anything in our budget.
No, it just puts the money that you spent on Wild Spaces back into it, yeah. But there's other buildings on, I've had somebody, and I have a letter, but we've got some things to work out. Somebody's looking at buying the old water, the Public Works Building over by the watershed. Somebody wants to buy that. We have people who have been interested, that would be interested in the Boy Scout Hut. I talked to somebody last week. So there's some, you know, where we got our spreadsheet of all the sellable properties that we have, too. I'm going through and going to the appraiser's site and seeing what the fair market value is on them. And we're going to send out letters to the adjoining property owners to see if they want it because our, our purchasing procedures, if it's an adjoining property, and I'll take a little, a little further in this, but the way I understand it is if it's an adjoining property, we don't have to do a competitive bidding. But if we wanted to sell it to somebody who's not an adjoining property, we have to do it through a sealed bid. So we're getting letters out to see if the adjoining properties, anybody's interested in buying an adjoining property, and then we will put it out to a concealed bid or competitive bid.
And the situation with the, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
The situation with the Canoe Outpost, was that confirmed? Because I know when I talked to Danielle, she said that she really never heard that before. So was that confirmed?
You might.
So we have, we have a meeting, Danielle and I, with the county on Thursday in order to address sort of the way that we're going to handle appreciation in Wild Spaces, Public Places, funds, and how we can utilize those afterwards. So I'll be able to answer that question a little bit better at our next meeting.
Thanks.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And this is maybe Diane or Jeremy or the lawyer can, with making these decisions tonight, if there's something we see down the road here in a month or two, is there something we can do to change this, amend this in any way to help this city run financially better?
Give me an example.
Say, just use the sewer. I'm not picking on the sewer. I'm just picking that out. If we see that we can save money somewhere else or, or return the transfer back to them from another, wherever, general fund, even though we vote on this, can we come back and look at this and change this later?
So...
To help run that particular entity?
I'll let Diane get the final answer. But we do budget amendments throughout the year that will clean up the budget as well. And if we make changes to the budget, for example, I don't know. Richard figures out how to be so efficient. We don't need to build ginder pumps anymore. We can get rid of a person.
That's my guy, Richard.
For example, since we're picking on sewer. Then, yeah, we can, I can, I can do that and say we're not going to refill that position and save money. Any, any change like that, we can do.
But we, as a commission, can also come back and look at that and, if we need to? Okay, thank you.
So one of your, I guess is a good point, not, take this the way it should be. It's, one of your biggest jobs as a commissioner is to approve the annual budget. So that's what you're doing right now. This is one of the biggest things that you do. But throughout the year, I give you financial updates or I'll do a workshop or something. And if you, as a commission, want to change the route that we're going, you can give me direction. We can, we can make changes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we've made a lot of strides, in my opinion, in terms of transparency with this budget, keeping things in the lane that they should be in. And I think with the ARPA funds that we had as buffer for a couple of years, I think it kind of kept the Band-Aid on for a while and made things a little bit less stark. And I think the first budget that you did, Mr. Marshall, focused on cutting expenses where we could. You know, we sold the boat, for instance. Just things that, that seemed to us to make a lot of sense. So I think we're making, making good strides. But it's a, it's a, it takes a long time to right the ship, in my opinion. And the ARPA funds were helpful in many, many ways. But it was, oh, sorry. It was a crutch, exactly.
I was talking to one of the commissioners today and talking about, you know, are we making headway on this problem? And we are. The thing about this budget and the financial issues that we have is this is going to be a marathon, not a sprint. You are not going to solve every single budget problem we had at the last meeting. But you made headway, you gave direction, and now we know what's the priorities so we can get you a, a good budget.
I'd agree with that. I agree with you, Commissioner White. I think we are moving in the right direction. It just takes time. Just takes time.
Mr. Mayor, before we have a vote, I will read the ordinance into the record.
Okay.
It's 2025-5, an ordinance adopting the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget of the City of High Springs, Florida, providing an effective date.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-05.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any public comment, citizens' comment?
Scott Jameson, just a quick question. Throughout the budget, I didn't hear any grant money. And so I'm curious, because when I was here, that was the mainstay. And we had like $20 million over the course of 10 years. And so I would like to know, have we applied for any grants? Do we have any grant money? Because a city of our size, that's, I mean, that's just like a gift. And if we're, if we're not, I see that as a, as a problem, especially on the sewer. We got more grants and more money to fund the sewer system. That was unbelievable. So I, I'm just curious. I would like to know, and I know somebody can give me the information, but I'd like to know, how many, how many grants have we applied for?
So in the last two months, I have applied for over $27 million worth of grants, $23 million, I'm sorry, $23 million. Most of those for sewer. And tonight, they're voting on engineer services. We got a $700,000 stormwater grant. We're applying for grants. There's not a lot with, with the spending, with the federal government being cut the way it was. The grants are just, they're not there. But we, we work with our lobbyists and we're applying for every grant that we can identify, so I find.
And that's within the last two months? So, and I don't want to be negative, but where was the last two years? You tell me we have a deficit of 700 and something or so forth. My question is, you knew you have a deficit. Why did we wait a year? And you don't need to answer it. I mean, I'm just saying, but I sat in that seat. And I'm just wondering how something could last that long, knowing you were in debt, and we didn't apply for grant money a year ago, a year and a half ago? We used to do it continuously. The state will grant you. One of the issues becomes, you apply for a grant, and then you don't use it. You go down to the bottom. We had so many grants when I was on the deal because Ed Booth got them. They were glad to give us the money because they knew it was going to be used. Every grant we applied. So I, I think that's something we need to really focus on, and I appreciate on the deal. I, 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 never mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Any other? I know that, I'm going to add to that. I know that we accepted one earlier this year to extend our wastewater. It was 1.9 or something along those lines. But also, being at that conference, I do, they talked a lot about how the federal government, as well as state governments, have cut their spending. So it, it has been a, an obstacle to find, to find grants and actually get them. So I, I believe it is an active thing that's going on, so.
Any other citizen comment? It's an ordinance. Angela, can we get a roll call?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes. All right, we have no unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, can this be where we read these letters before we get into citizen comments?
If that's what you want to do, yeah.
That's, it's up to you.
That's fine for me.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, we had some, at the last meeting, as many people here know, there might, there was some misinformation put out. And Chief Peters wrote a statement. He'd like it read at the meeting with your permission, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So I'll, I'll read it. Mayor Grunder, Vice Mayor Miller, Commissioner, City Manager Marshall, and the entire High Springs community, I would like to clear the air a little bit. During the last commission meeting, emotions ran high. And in the wave of those emotions, things were said that were inaccurate. I own these inaccuracies, not, no matter who said them. I am the chief of the department. Ultimately, the actions of the fire person will fall solely on me. I have spoken with Chief Diaz on the phone and offered my sincere apology for the actions that took place at the last meeting. To the men and women of ACFR Local 3852, please know that nothing I said at the last meeting was intended to discredit the amazing work you do day in and day out for the communities of Alachua County. The men and women of ACFR in the streets doing the work are exceptional in what they do, and I'm honored to leave a department that works side by side with you. Mayor Grunder, commissioners, may I remind you that when I took over the helm of the fire department, we faced many challenges. We have worked tirelessly to conquer those challenges, and I say "we" because it has been a team effort. I was directed to determine exactly what it costs to run the department, and I did just that. We were directed to remedy some unnecessary expenses. For example, the heavy, the boat, the Tahuhs, the Suburbans, and we did just that. We've become a united department, working together to serve the citizens of High Springs. Do I make mistakes? Certainly. I believe we all do at some point, and mistakes are how we learn and grow. At the end of the day, I'm passionate about these things. My wife, my daughters, my grandson, and my family, the fire department, and the men and women I lead. And the city as a whole, I want nothing more than to see the city succeed and become the best version of itself. We have come a long way since City Manager Marshall took over the reins, but we have a lot of work left to do. The staff you have now is the dream team. We work together daily to ensure the most transparent, efficient run city possible, and I'm proud to work beside each and every one of the employees of High Springs. That is from Chief Peters. And then Kevin has a letter he would like to read as well.
First and foremost, I want to thank the city manager for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I made sure to make notes I had to write. I sincerely apologize for the inaccurate statements I made during the August 28th commission meeting regarding protocol, staffing, and response times. Please know that there was no deceit, malice, or disrespect that was intended. The fault lies entirely with me and in his mind. I was speaking off the cuff without adequately being prepared and composing my thoughts. In doing so, I made a serious blunder. I was wrong, and it hit me later. After reviewing the video and then realizing my mistake, the next morning, I immediately notified the city manager of my error. In addition, I sent a personal message of accountability for myself to Chief Diaz. My mistake has weighed heavily on my mind since August 29th. Frankly, I have been sick over it. I take full responsibility for this painful misstep. And again, apologize to Chief Diaz and all the members of Alachua County Fire Rescue, many of whom are close, personal friends. Our community of High Springs means the world to me. I would never intentionally do anything that runs counter to our mission as a whole. Now more than ever, I remain committed to being thorough and accurate in everything I bring to my role. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. Limit comments to five minutes, please.
Julie Tapia-Ruano. Before I read what I had written, and I'm editing as I go, so you can throw out that copy. Before I read what I had written before this meeting, I am, must say, I am very furious at how a civic leader guest was just ignored completely at this meeting. A special presentation proclamation was sought and received by the Daughters of the American Revolution Gainesville chapter. Their Regent Carol Shoup drove up here from Gainesville, Florida to receive it. Mr. Mayor, you neither raised your eyes nor acknowledged her standing there to receive the proclamation and to give her thanks on behalf of their chapter and to take a picture for posterity. It would have been proper to recognize her presence. She was standing to be acknowledged, to shake her hand, and to commend the Daughters of the American Revolution for their work on Constitution matters. Now to what I had written, I was just editing. In light of the letters, I do appreciate the honesty and the apologies. So what I had written for was before I had heard those, so please use discretion. It was come to my attention that our city of High Springs has once again been embarrassed by hasty and cliche sayings and unresearched opinions. I do appreciate the clear and transparent apologies. If you would recall, I stood here on June 12th, 2025, and presented a letter about bad protocol and out-of-order motions and voting at the joint city-county meeting concerning the controversial alcohol ordinance. Our mayor was not there at my reading of that letter. When a special commission was finally called on July 31st, 2025, at 6:00 PM to vote on his special project, the mayor was not there. Likewise, on a very important vote for the budget of 2025, read on September 12th, 2024, the mayor again was not there. Two other potential situations that could cast a shadow on the city of High Springs have to do with perceived bias and campaign procedures. While individuals may certainly endorse individuals with special rules to follow if they are, if they are current staff or sitting members, the city as a whole cannot. To my point, the city of High Springs government Facebook page recently picked up and repeated a long, glowing article from Gainesville Police Department about one of their own, Sergeant Grunder. All well-deserved and honored. Although our city attorney has stated that it does not rise to the test of endorsement or campaigning per the Supreme Court, it still looks like bias when a challenger is not mentioned nor given equal space. The second point of that fact is that a citizen compelled the city manager earlier in the summer to get between the issues where he has no role or authority and to ask a challenger, to the incumbent, to stop campaigning at a city event outside of a city building. The citizen has since apologized, and it was not at all any fault. The citizen has since apologized, and it was not at all any fault on the city manager. One last request, if I have time, can the commission please seek out the record of our contract with our city attorney and verify its date of origin, whether or not it is actually signed? What is the date of renewal and what are the conditions of termination that could prompt an RFP for the future? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda Jones. I watched again the meeting of September, of August 28th this afternoon. And um it was not so much the words, but the tone that was used by the mayor when he was talking about the Fire Department, the Alachua County Fire Department accusing them of um, what was it he said? They're trying to really, they want us to really get rid of you. And use some expletive in the meantime. He was, you were not um maintaining your composure. You lost your composure, and it was a time when it should have been a calm, which everybody else did maintain. But you don't seem to be able to maintain your composure. I believe the letter from Chief Theis was mainly based on the conversation that was held by you and your um outburst at that meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Stacy Smith Fisher, and on a happier note, I'm not here to um talk about any previous meetings. I am here to talk about something that is disappearing from our communities, however, the magic of childhood wonder. That feeling you got walking into a bookstore for the very first time is disappearing from our community forever. Picture a bookstore where stories come alive. Imagine children discovering their favorite books, families connecting over coffee, young adults finding hope in the perfect story. But right now, our community has no bookstore. Families drive 20 minutes or more to soulless chain stores, searching for the connection that they can't find. They spend hours doom scrolling online, searching for connection, only to lose sleep and more actual time with friends. Our children are growing up without a sanctuary for wonder and belonging. As a homeschool mom, I was planning for the new school year last February and became increasingly frustrated with sourcing books. I had long benefited from my husband working for large curriculum companies. This year was different, and I was spending hours upon hours curating books for my children. It was out of this frustration that the idea to launch a booksmith, community, and homeschool bookstore was created. Instead of complaining about the problem, I decided I could be the solution. With my husband's experience in curriculum and in retail, and my experience in homeschooling and launching a business with Mark Burnett of The Apprentice and Survivor, I am confident we can make this a success here in High Springs. But this isn't about me. This is about our children's future. This is the first place I've lived where there's not a homeschool bookstore or a family bookstore where children can just explore. And um children are our future, and the old saying of readers make leaders is still true today. I'm sure many of you read quite a bit, and if not, come see me. So let's make some of those leaders be from High Springs. Children are losing out on the mystery of wonder and a good book that not only entertains them, but inspires them. Charlotte Mason, a revered educator and author, said this. Children should have the joy of living in far lands in other persons at other times. A delightful double existence, and this joy they will find, for the most part, in their storybooks. A booksmith will be a place where lonely neighbors become friends, struggling readers find confidence, and dreams take flight. But I can't do this alone. I do need 100 people to contribute $1,000 each to help purchase and transform the shell of Wisteria Cottage on Main Street into a community treasure. Every dollar, five or 500, brings us closer to opening the doors to children who need magic and families who deserve connection. I plan to host community events for local authors and artists, homeschool clubs and workshops, cooking tasting events, offline adventures where folks can enjoy a digital detox, connecting with friends and neighbors. If you believe children deserve wonder and communities need a gathering place, join our story right now. Visit Indiegogo, um search a booksmith, and help us prove that stories still have the power to change lives. A booksmith is more than a homeschool curriculum in the back and new releases and gifts in the front. It's business in the back and party in the front. It's the magical reverse mullet High Springs didn't know it needed. Please visit abooksmith.com right now, and you can be one of the 100 to donate $1,000 each through our website or through our Indiegogo crowdfunding campaign. The 10th donor of $25 or more tonight will receive this lovely um Family of Spies book and can pick it up tonight or Saturday at our pop-up bookstore in the pavilion at the Fall Festival in High Springs. So please come see us Saturday at our booth for more giveaways. I'll be at the door or sitting there tonight when we wrap up here. If you have more questions or answers, I have some ugly figures you can look at. And um and then just a few months from now, you can imagine a child could walk through the doors of a booksmith and discover the book that changes everything. That magic starts today, and it starts with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other citizen comment? Any Commissioner comments back?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, as a daughter of a librarian, all of my children love to read, and I would love nothing more than to have a bookstore here. It would be wonderful. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. I will say to uh, if I missed that lady, I am extremely sorry, and I'll reach out to her myself and uh and tell her that I didn't know she was gonna be here. That's on me. To the me getting fired up for citizens and and employees of High Springs, that's not gonna change either. I'm passionate about this town. I always will be. I care about the people who work here. I care about the people who live here. If I think that uh that someone is is doing something or I'm being given information that they're doing something to what I would consider hurt, people that work or um live in this town, I will always stand up for them. That's all I have to say about that. And we will move on to uh.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I I'm actually gonna go ahead and I wasn't gonna beat the dead horse, but I'm going to. This is the letter that was sent in from Fire Rescue Professionals of Alachua County, not Chief Theis. It was written by the union. Dear Mayor Grunder and members of the City Commission, after closely observing the August 28th commission meeting, yes, we were watching. It became unmistakably clear that multiple inaccuracies and unwarranted warranted personal attacks were made from the dais, including by your Fire Chief, Chief Peters. Against the Alachua County ACFR, Chief Harold Theis and the members of Local 3852, that would be the Fire Rescue Professionals Union. The Fire Rescue Professionals of Alachua County Local 3852 represent 319 firefighters from both Alachua County Fire Rescue and the Newberry Fire Rescue. These dedicated professionals do not idly wait outside for a secondary fire apparatus before making rescues inside burning buildings. Both ACFR and NFR operate aggressively and with professionalism, putting their lives on the line daily for the citizens they serve. For the record, Newberry Fire Rescue is providing advanced life support, ALS. The National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, endorses OSHA's two-in, two-out safety rule, but explicitly provides exemptions when the fire is in a in um in the incipient stage or there is a reason to believe victims are inside. In most cases, a rescue unit accompanies our fire apparatus, totaling a minimum of five personnel on scene. All 24-hour rescue units are capable of interior firefighting. In the past two years, there have been 11 building fires in the city of High Springs, where naturally, High Springs was the first to arrive. The average arrival time for additional apparatus not belonging to the High Springs was less than four and a half minutes, not the 10 to 15 minutes claimed during the meeting. Forgive me, I'm changing pages. The relocation of Station 21 was a transparent planned decision, not a secret covert maneuver. The city of High Springs was informed over a year ago of the move to the north, a fact explicitly shown in the current Fire Services contract signed by this commission. Cost per call methodologies are inherently variable and assist relocations inevitably. Impact revenue outcomes guaranteed yearly revenue does not exist with methodology. No one is attempting to buy your Fire Department at a discounted rate, as was falsely suggested. Local 3852 has negotiated numerous contracts as well and understands that all agreements require approval from appropriate authorities. Chief Theis answers to superiors, as do we all, and sometimes the final decisions are difficult but necessary. While accusations were made allegedly bad faith negotiations for shortchanging the citizens of High Springs, it is critical to acknowledge the significant contributions Alachua County provides to your city's fire rescue services at no charge. Fire, 10 Fire Department radios valued at $6,000 to $8,000 each donated to the city. No charges for some medical supplies and medical waste disposal. Assisting and enabling High Springs Fire Rescue to provide ALS services since 2019. Comprehensive fire prevention services and training provided during the city's interim Fire Chief vacancy. Local 3852 does not wish to see anyone lose their job and if uh empathize.
Empathize.
Thank you, empathizes with the difficulties involved. However, while we respect Chief Peters' commitment to his personnel, we will not tolerate his defense being built on misinformation and founded critics criticism of the brave men and women of Alachua County Fire Rescue. We accept that future discussions will be based on accurate facts and mutual respect for all parties involved. Respectfully, Ryan Lowery, President, Fire Rescue Professionals of Local 3852. So there's just a lot going on. Uh, it was a horrible meeting on several parties. It's it's done and over. We need to move forward. One of the worst things that I see here is people want to continue to bring up the past, and we can't move forward.
Moving on to new business item one, discuss, consider, and act on Resolution 2025 dash M.
Again, um, this is a very brief item. We have just a couple of rate changes to incorporate into the budget, and I just want to review them here with you. They've already been mentioned during the budget presentation, but we just, we need to put them in as a resolution. So we want to make sure that we capture them here for you. So as we discussed in the scenario that was selected, the increase to each sewer customer would be $24.25. You can see the FY25 rate is what the current monthly charge for sewer customers is by class. And in the right-hand column, FY26 rate is with the 2425 added on. Keep in mind that these do include the first 5,000 gallons of each bill and um I'm trying to think if there's anything, that's really about it. But it's a monthly charge for anybody with sewer service. And then, as Mr. Marshall mentioned, we did want to update the the hydrant meters. They're very expensive, very large meters that go onto fire hydrants to use on construction sites. And historically, we have not really, we haven't charged for installation or removal of that. And obviously, it takes time to roll a truck twice to do that. The deposit of $100 is not nearly sufficient for a meter of that size. The monthly charge has been what everyone else's is, but again, it's a large meter with a great expense, so we're proposing $40. And then the charge per thousand gallons, since typically most of it is not for indoor consumption, for household consumption, we're looking at, not the first here, but second, at $3.80 each. So it'd kind of be like an irrigation rate. And then finally, the water and sewer impact fees. We'd mentioned these throughout the past few months and how low they are. And um so we're proposing the water that's currently $250 would be $500, and the sewer that's 2120 would be 24, I mean, $2,400. There was a typo, my typo, in the packet, and it said it was $240 instead of 2,400. I apologize. We did do an updated sheet, and the resolution will include the the appropriate number. And two people get bonuses for catching it that called me, Alan and Danielle. So again, that is just for new um connections. Any questions on any of those? Again, I just want to make sure you guys have, these are the only changes that we're making. We didn't change any other water rates. We didn't change any of the solid waste rates. Um, we do have a resolution that was to do CPI for each of those systems every year from 2020, I believe. And so I've tried my best to incorporate that in this resolution to indicate that we're aware of that, but we are superseding that, so to speak, on what right word is, by doing the resolution today. And including what the rates currently are and showing that there's no change.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Um, on your typical residential home, what would you say, how many go over 5,000 gallons a month? Is that is that on the low side?
It's probably about average. I would say five is about the average. There's lots of people that, you know, maybe only use three. If nobody's irrigating, they tend to be between three and eight, depending on your household size, how much laundry you do, how many kids you have, kind of thing.
So if they use 7,000 gallons, it's gonna be the base rate plus $3.80 twice?
Um, on the sewer, no, it's 796 per k-gal over the five. So it would be the base rate plus two times $7.96.
Plus $7.60?
Yes. 796, yep.
And then is there is there a a place where if it's over 10 grand, 10,000 gallons, is it gonna be more than $3.80? Is it always 380 for each additional 1,000 gallons over 5,000?
For water or for sewer?
Uh, for sewer.
For sewer. So the sewer is 796 per 1,000 gallons, and it does not have any tiers. It's that's the flat, same price for all water. I mean, sewer billed.
Do we have tiers for water?
We do.
Okay.
Would that be normal to have tiers for sewer?
I don't typically see it. And really, with the sewer, it's it's what you're billing for. Nothing runs through a meter for sewer, for those of that don't know that. We do the sewer billing based on water through the meter. So that's why people get an irrigation meter, because there's no sewer associated with it. So you're not paying a sewer because we're you're watering your lawn with it. We know it's not going back into the system.
I do have a question.
Yes.
We approved or we voted on that grant earlier this year for 236. And one of the big things was the impact fees for the residents. Is there a way, and I know it's probably not the right time to ask, but is there a way to keep it at 2120 for them? Seeing how that was already granted and approved or?
I would I would have to take a look at the specifics on that.
That's a good question. This isn't a bad time. That's a really good question, so.
If I had to guess, I think they're grandfathered in because of when it was done, but we could take a look. I I don't know for sure. Strictly a guess.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025 dash M as read.
Second.
Probably moved in second. And do we have any citizen comments? Okay. It is a resolution. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
All right, we will discuss, consider, and act on contractor bid for the Priest Theater roof structure and roof replacement.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have finally put the put it out for bid for the Priest Theater. You have a letter from Paul Strasing's office with his recommendation, as he's the one to oversaw the process. And that that recommendation was the only bid that would fit into the amount of money that we have left. So I think that's part of the reason why.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question, just clarifying, this is just rer roofing. Does no vertical stabilization or does that include vertical stabilization? The whole thing? And that's still within budget?
Yep.
That's. That's wonderful news.
We were surprised with the, um, with the rise of cost of steel right now. That's why we had, we had to extend it to give the contractors more time to get accurate bids for the price of steel. That's why this was delayed a week.
And if I could ask, um, how soon will we, will we be ready to start if we award this tonight?
If you award this tonight, then we have to send it to the state because of the historical aspect of it. The state architect has to approve the whole package and then soon, so it's really waiting on the state. They were pretty slow in the last phase.
Yes, I remember.
Um, I don't think they'll be that slow this time. But sooner the better. Hurricane season's coming, and every time it's a gust of wind, I hold my breath.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, if I could clear up something about the priests. Um, I see it a lot on social media about the grant, the grant that we receive from the priests is totally different than the grant from the canoe outpost. Is it okay for me to clear it up?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And the grant that we receive for the priests can only be used for the priests.
Correct.
So, because I, the only reason why I'm clearing it up, because there's a lot of people that, that asks, why are we using this grant money for the priests and not for other things?
When you, when you do a grant project, for example, the priests, that the funds that you get are very restricted, and they tell you what you can and you can't spend it on, so what we do is, say the grant is, it is a million dollars. So we bought it, and we spent three-hundred thousand dollars on the purchase, I don't remember the number, three-hundred thousand on the purchase. We have to take, we have to pay that and submit it to the grantor for reimbursement, and they have to approve the expenditures within the project, so we can't use any of that money for plants at the canoe outpost. It has to only be on, um, what was in that grant project for the priest.
And this grant was not a matching grant?
No, it wasn't.
Like I said, I just wanted to clear that, because so many people have wrote about the priests, but the grant is totally different than the grant that we have with the canoe outpost, and the restrictions on the grant is not the same either.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, also, um, piggyback on what Vice Mayor Miller said, the appropriations funding, and I made sure to clarify this a couple of years ago when we were, or a while ago when we were first talking about this, the appropriations funding that we received does not restrict us from selling the property.
Correct. The only part that has any part of it is the conservation, you're talking about for the, are you talking about for the priest or the canoe?
For the priest theater, yes, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
For the priest theater, sorry.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we award the work to Hoffman Construction based on Paul Strassing's recommendation.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment on this?
Can we tap you over on a question?
Um, the length of the grant, is there an expiration date on using the funds and beyond the roof repair, what is left to do with the priest?
So for the priests, we have to stabilize the walls and then rerooof. That's all this grant is doing, is stabilizing the structure and putting a new roof on it. What was the second part of your question, Julie? I'm sorry.
When it times out? Does the grant run out, or is it an expiration?
There is an expiration date, but because the state architect has to approve this, that state architect went on vacation, I don't know, the Caribbean will say, and it took so long that they've given us an extension. I don't have the date of it, but we have an extension, and if that runs out because they took so long, they said they would give us another one.
Any other citizen comment? Okay. Been properly moved and seconded to, granted to Hoffman Construction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right. New business item three. Discuss, consider, and act on waiving all costs associated with city required support for Operation Douglas Warriors Special Event Permit Application.
Good evening. I'm Valoria Kelly of the Douglas Historical School Society, and this is Mr.
Donald Hamm from retired military from Port Charlotte, Florida.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, okay. Before you, is our letter and application requesting that the city supports our project, Operation Douglas Warriors, which is to recognize our military veterans who were honorably discharged and attended Douglas School, which is now the Douglas Community Center. This project will celebrate veterans who served both during wartime and peacetime. The event will also preserve and celebrate the rich history of Douglas School, which provided educational opportunities for African-Americans in High Springs from nineteen-thirty until it closed in nineteen-seventy due to integration. To qualify for inclusion, the honoree must have attended Douglas and received an honorable discharge for military service. We propose placing memorial tiles on the columns outside of the Douglas Community Center, and we have examples of the tiles. The tiles will be made of steel, they'll be weather resistant, and would be permanently affixed to the cinder blocks. The Douglas Historical School Society and Mr. Hamm and volunteers, we would be responsible for all costs associated with producing and installing the tiles. We're also asking the city's support with our special permit application. We met with the city staff last Wednesday. Both the police department and the fire department indicated that we would not need any services from them. However, we would need assistance from, I guess it would be Public Works with setting up, um, some chairs for the dedication if it's approved, so. Questions, consigns?
I think this is fabulous. I think anything we can do to recognize the men and women who have served for this country is what we need to do. You have my support.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question. Ms. Kelly, there's a Veterans Day program that was proposed to be there the weekend before. Is that correct, Mr. Marshall?
Correct.
Is there a reason why they couldn't be combined so everybody could celebrate together?
Well, the.
We're actually doing this on the fifteenth of November as it's going to be held at the Douglas, the place where we're.
This was supposed to be at the Douglas, um.
It was the other, the other app Clinton wasn't interested in partnering.
Yeah, and then from my knowledge, you all actually had this event planned before that event even came about, so they actually were the first to.
Okay.
But we don't mind waiting a week. I mean, there's, we celebrate veterans twenty-four, seven, and it's all good, so.
Can you estimate for me, Ms. Kelly, how many you, you think you'll end up being able to put up?
We're very ambitious. We, we, there are, I think, room for two-hundred-and-thirteen names. We are very ambitious. Mr. Hamm, he's most ambitious. We are hoping to get one-hundred, um, by November fifteenth for this celebration. Our goal is with, and I'll be back next year, um, each Veterans Day will add more names, so understanding we won't reach all of the veterans by October first for the first inclusion, and so next year, we'll do it again, get more veterans, another celebration until we fill up all two-hundred-and-thirteen spaces.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
Are y'all just going to put those or attach those to the columns? Are they going to be on the wall of the building? And I'm just, I'm, I'm for that. That looks beautiful.
They're going to be on the columns as you enter into the Douglas.
Right, okay. Is there anything we need to be concerned about far structurally that y'all have already discussed all that? Copy that. Okay, sir. Looks beautiful. Thank you for that.
Mr. Marshall, can you, can you give us a sense of availability for the Douglas Center? Is it getting rented more? Is this going to keep somebody else from?
We're starting to see a pretty good uptick on the rentals for, it was a little slow in the beginning. People didn't know about it, and it's, it's being rented, yeah. I think it's, I don't know, I don't think it's rented as much as the Civic Center, but it's, it's rented, yeah.
So this is not going to prevent somebody from paying for that space, is I guess where I'm going? Nobody else has asked for, okay. I'm glad that it's being used.
Hopefully, this will encourage more people to rent it.
Yeah.
It should be what's in both our interests, because we need to recognize the veterans that served, and as you were saying before you read a thing about a veteran that was serving, and we have several veterans that came back from Vietnam and have not been recognized, and the plan is to recognize them on that day.
Ms. Kelly, I would love to get some more names that we could maybe recognize at the next few meetings to try to kick this off. That would be wonderful.
We are there. Happy to assist.
And as she said before, we have donations as well. We accept donations, and if we can get the publication, the paperwork that we have to get it out on the county, I'm not sure whether you have a website or whatnot, if we can put it on your website to get the honorees to come forward.
And each one of those tiles will have an individual's name and service?
Each tile has their individual name and their photograph.
Oh, nice.
That's beautiful.
Maybe you can turn that around and show the citizens?
Yeah, sure. This will be the very first column at the top, say Douglas Warriors, and then.
And then these will be the individuals.
Awesome. Awesome, Mr. Hamm. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
If somebody wanted to donate, how do they go about donating?
Oh, good. I have a flyer, um, and they can send their donation directly to Mr. Hamm via VenmoZelle. They can also send their donation to the Douglas Historical School Society.
Great, thank you. So for those of us that aren't part of this century and don't have Venmo or Zelle, folks could also write a check.
You can write a check.
Okay, that is good enough.
Credit card, checks, we think.
And I'll make, Mr. Marshall, I'll make sure that I get Ashley.
You can leave it right there, no.
Okay. Well, I can give you this one.
All right, well, I would like to make a motion to approve the waiving of the special event. I do also have to make a motion for the.
For the.
It could be a two-parter.
For the services that the city will provide? Yes, you can include it in the same.
You don't need for that, okay, go ahead.
Okay. And for the services that the city will provide.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss, consider, and act on temporarily suspending the alcohol consumption ordinance for the Hot Rotting for Heroes One-Day Event.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is, you've had this, um, every year. What they do is they block off the road right here in front of the priest between the, they barricaded off, and the car show comes and they park their cars. This will allow spectators to go get a beer at the brewery and walk around the barricaded areas for the cars, take a look at them. I talked with the chief in the past. We don't have any problem with it, and I don't think there's been any alcohol incidents with this in years past.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the, the street that we block off is a city street, so it's nothing we have to do through DOT. It's pretty straightforward.
I've been lucky enough to be a judge for that the last couple of years, and I will tell you that it is a fantastically well-attended and well-run event, and some of the most beautiful cars you will ever see. It is amazing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve temporary suspension of the alcohol consumption ordinance for the Hot Rotting for Heroes One-Day Event.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to new business item five. Discuss, consider, and act on First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between Latu County and the city of High Springs for fire suppression and first responder EMS slash rescue services.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the, um, agreement with the county for your fire. This is a continuation of the previous contract. The rates are staying the same. The only difference is, is previous years, we had a floor. They had a certain amount that they would give to us. We're not having, there's no soft landings, there's nothing. It's just the eight-hundred-and-sixty-five, thank you, Kevin, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per call each way. It's just extending it for a year. We're not going to make any changes so we can get more data from Station 21 before we can really make any argument on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question. Mr. Marshall, you said that there had been a floor previously? I thought that was something new that we were asking for.
That's why I tried to crack myself. I guess I did make it understandable. No, there's not a floor. I'm trying to say there's not a floor. It's just based on the rate. I missed, I think I misspoke and then corrected correctly, sorry.
Our original contract negotiations, we were asking for a soft landing to give us enough time to get data, and that's what the county said, um, no to.
Correct.
And I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, there's been mention of the email that I sent to the county commission just to try to get some grace, and I'd like to take this moment just to read this so that you all know what I said, because you don't know. This was sent on August fourteenth. "Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Marshall advised me recently that there has been a proposed estimated thirty-three percent reduction in the amount that the city of High Springs receives from the county for mutual aid in providing fire services to residents of Latu County. While we certainly expect there to be less of a need for our fire department to provide aid to the county, given the beautiful new fire station recently opened in the city of Latu, at this time, we only have approximately three months of data that is driving this significant reduction. Understanding that our annual budget is so much smaller than the county's budget, a hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar deficit for us is significant. We recently passed a resolution setting our fire assessment fee higher for the upcoming year, as it had been quite some time since we had raised that rate for both residential and commercial residents, so I don't think we have the capability of adjusting that at this point in our budget cycle. I would ask, please, that you consider keeping the annual mutual aid amount for the same for this fiscal year so that we could use a full year's worth of data to prepare for the possibility of raising that fire assessment commensurate with the need that is determined in the coming year. Chief Theus has been a tremendous resource to us here in High Springs. Most recently, more than a year ago, when we were between fire chiefs, he didn't hesitate for a moment to step in and help us to bridge the gap. We are genuinely grateful for the continued partnership." So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what I had said. You know, I think it was worth asking, and, and I understand their perspective as well. You know, Chief Theus may have gone to the county manager, and their county manager has the same ability that our city manager has to, no, we can't budget for that. So, you know, we asked, and it, we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure it out, and I think we will. But what, one thing that I had a question about at the last meeting was the amount in and out being the same, and recognizing in the contract that there's all these supplies that we get from the county. Those supplies are there, but there's never really been a dollar associated with that. So I don't know if we can estimate all of the supplies and the support we get from them, and, you know, what kind of dollar value there is associated with that, because then, if you incorporate that into the big picture, we may, we may be getting a pretty sweet deal, and I don't want that to be lost. You know, we're not paying a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year for dispatch services. They're covering that somehow. That's a big, that's a big plus. All the supplies that Chief Peters did mention that we get from them, I just don't know what that dollar value is, and I don't need to know that now, but I think it's important that that be part of the conversation so that maybe it would help us make a more informed decision, and, you know, with it being eight-sixty-five in, eight-sixty-five out, that might be, that might be working in our benefit when I didn't really realize that before. So that's not necessarily part of this conversation, but it's tangential, and it was important for me to make that clear, that I'd really like to know what kind of dollars that is, because they do, when, when we were in between fire chiefs, Chief Theus was here, and he was very, very supportive, and as I said in my email, we're very grateful for the partnership. Thank you, sir.
Any other commissioner comments?
I make a motion that we approve the First Amendment. I make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between Alachua County and the City of High Springs for fire suppression.
Second. Do we have any citizen comment? Angela, that's just a regular vote, right? Okay. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to new business item six. Discuss, consider and act on letter to the Alachua County Board of County Commissioners regarding fire mutual aid.
So, Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you asked us to, asked the attorney to draw, draft up a draft letter and that's what you have for your, for your reading and discussion and action?
I think, in light of everything, that it just needs to be scrapped.
Mr. Mayor, I concur. You know, we've asked for a soft landing and we didn't get it. And we're gonna need to move on. So I would make a motion that we not send this letter.
Second.
Any citizen comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Business item seven. Discuss, consider and act on letter to Windexy Corporate in favor of maintaining the Windexy instead of Aldi.
Same thing. You asked for a letter to keep it for Windexy and that's what you have.
Yeah, I think this is a good letter. That was one of my first jobs here in High Springs. I was their youngest employee at the time. And I would say Store Number Thirty has been the top store in the whole district for quite a long time. So it should stay Windexy because it has been the top store in the district for quite some time.
It's a staple. It's definitely a staple. We want it to stay as a Windexy for sure. For sure.
Kirsten, I want to thank you and Danielle, whoever drafted this. I think it's really excellently worded, Mr. Mayor. I would, would love to make a motion that we send this letter out.
Second.
Any citizen comment? Okay. Oh. Can we, Kirsten, Kirsten, can you read the letter, please?
Absolutely. I'm happy to, or you can read it. It's up to you. I've got it. Regarding the preservation of the High Springs Windexy location to whom it may concern, on behalf of the City Commission of High Springs, we are ready to express our strong support for preserving our local Windexy store located at two-zero-three-zero-three, U.S. four-four-one, High Springs, Florida three-two-six-four-three, and to respectfully oppose any proposed conversion of this location to an Aldi. The High Springs Windexy has served as a cornerstone of our community for many years. It is more than a grocery store. It is a trusted and familiar place where residents of all ages and backgrounds reliably stop for their, shop for their families. The store provides not only a broad selection of groceries, fresh produce and meats, but also essential services such as its pharmacy, which unfortunately has already been closed. These services are vital to our citizens, particularly seniors and residents with limited transportation options. A conversion to Aldi raises significant concerns. While Aldi may serve certain markets well, its limited service model does not meet the full service needs of our growing population. High Springs is experiencing steady residential and commercial growth and the community requires a grocery provider that offers variety, accessibility, and the personal service that Windexy has consistently provided. Maintaining Windexy at this location also supports the local economy. It sustains employment for current staff, keeps consumer spending within our city, and continues a longstanding partnership between Windexy and the people of High Springs. The goodwill and loyalty that Windexy has built here should not be overlooked. For these reasons, the High Springs City Commission respectfully requests that Windexy leadership refrain from converting the High Springs store to an Aldi and instead continue investing in this location's success as a Windexy. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration of the City of High Springs. Respectfully, the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners.
Very welcome. Okay, we have a properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. New business item eight. Discuss, consider and act on RFQ for engineering services.
So, Mr. Mayor, as I said previously in this meeting, that we got approved for a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar stormwater grant. We had a fifty-thousand-dollar match. And as Mr. Jameson alluded to earlier, that, that CBG grant is not something you want to turn back. So I took fifty grand out of my contingency fund, which is a third of it, and covered the grant. So this is the engineer putting it out for bid for qualifications for the engineering. It's just the process of the grant.
So we're just making a motion to send it out for...
For qualifications, yeah.
Is there anything specific that we need to be looking for when the bids come in as far as quality of services? Or is there certain specifics that they're, they need to be, or...
There's, there's specific requirements within the grant that they have to meet. But as far as when we get back, we'll, we'll do a, we're gonna go more to a matrix as far as our grading and stuff. But this isn't an RFP. They're not gonna give a normal bid amount. It's qualifications for who is interested in going in for the engineering services.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the RFQ also sets out ranking criteria. It sets out minimum requirements for any engineer. Obviously, they have to be licensed. They need to have insurance and all of those good kinds of things. And then the ranking criteria, you can see on page four and five of the RFQ, which talks about record of professional accomplishments, qualifications, staff availability, all those kinds of things, and indicates what sort of weight each of those will be given in the analysis.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make, ask a question. Mr. Marshall, you referenced, this is a CDBG grant?
This is CBDG grant, yep, for stormwater.
How long has that been in the works? Because the last time we talked, CDBG was a long time ago.
It's about, I think it's been three years.
Wow.
We just got notified several months ago. But we were going through and going through the process. We had to get a grant administrator. Now we've done that. Now we're putting out the RFQ. Yep.
Okay.
This is definitely not a grant. It's why I took the money out of my contingency fund, because CBDG grant is not one you want to turn back.
Right. Right. Where, where is this project? It's the one that we approved a while, a while back?
Two-forty-four, Jason.
Two-forty-second.
Okay.
Jason said this is pretty well-needed in that area. That stormwater is needed there, so.
Fork out fifty, get seven-hundred back. I'm with that. I make a motion that we send out the bid for, send out the request for RFQ.
Second.
It's properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to new business item nine. Discuss, consider and act on Resolution twenty-five dash zero.
Sorry, and this is dash O. The, as the Commission is aware, you all went through the process to award a bid for your land development code to be rewritten. This is the individual KCT Consulting Services that you all chose for that position. And this is the contract which comes out of that, award of that bid. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions. Just some things to note on the agreement. The payment and term, it's one year. That is the estimate of how long it's going to take. There's a six-month buffer period that's built into the contract, just in case it takes a little bit longer. The way that the contract payment term is written is that it's a flat ninety-thousand-dollar fee with increments paid over a course of several months. The increase in your twelve equal installments of ninety-thousand dollars, so we estimate the, let me put it like this. We estimate the contract will take one year. Ninety-thousand dollars for one year of work. If it takes one year and three months, you don't have to make an additional payment if it takes longer. It's still that flat fee. We just have the six-month buffer built in so that the contract doesn't expire during that time.
Is there a penalty in there if it's not done within that year and six months? That we would get some financial back?
So the, the way that the contract is written is that there are, there's a requirement that it be completed within the period of time. There's also termination. If it's for cause, for instance, we see, because we're not gonna get up on a year and think to ourselves, okay, we've seen zero progress, but it'll be done in six months. We're gonna have a little bit of notice of what's going to be occurring. And we can terminate for cause if we see that occurring. That way, we're not paying the full ninety-thousand dollars.
I know in the last meeting when we talked about this and they were saying that the, we may need to save some money in case we need more money with it. What would that be if it's a flat rate of ninety? What would the more money be used for?
The more money, so what we're gonna do is we're setting some money aside because when, when you were interviewing her at the end, nobody was doing her QC. Nobody's reviewing this. And we don't wanna just say, you know, they send it to us, it's great. We may have to hire an individual person to do a review and a QC check. I mean, I could do it and save you the money, but I'm not a planner. So get, it may be worth somebody taking a look at it and saying, yeah, this meets all your requirements as an individual. I'm not saying it's gonna come to that. I'm just saying it'd be smart, since there was no QC or no review really in there, to keep that money aside. Won't be, it won't be, I think it's like seventy thousand we have left over or something. It won't be anything like that, but we will be saving some money for our QC review process.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
With that being said, the difference between the two con, the prices on the bid, with having to pay another firm to do a quality check, are we still gonna come under budget? Or not under budget, but in between the two bids? I mean, how much, what's our estimate on getting a QC done?
I don't know what a QC. I'm planning on keeping fifteen grand back from it for a QC. On top of the ninety, I'd be one-oh-five. And the other one came in, I think, at one-seventy-five. So you're still well under the other one.
And typically, any idea how long a QC would be done before, you know, we could get this implemented into our policies and stuff?
It would be done as part of the process. And when I get a draft, if I think we need a QC for it, I would send it out to a QC. I don't know how long a QC, we'd say, let's say a month for them to take a look at it and tell us, yeah, it's good to go or recommend changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? In terms of quality control, I found that to be completely acceptable, unacceptable. She thought she could do her own QC. So I'm really grateful that you're thinking in that, that direction. Would it be advisable to incorporate into the contract language, making sure that all documents were made available to, to an outside entity of our choosing to make sure that they can do adequate quality, quality control?
Yeah, so we do have a, an acceptance of services, a deliverables clause in the contract, which essentially states basically a QC, which is that the services or the deliverables, the LDC rewrites, will be delivered to the city. And then the city will have an opportunity to review those and tell the contractor, KCT, yes or no. And these are the certain things that need to be changed as sort of your, your quality assurance check.
Okay. So we don't necessarily need to specify in her contract. We're going to be contracting with somebody outside. It would just come from us and we can do as we wish.
Correct. We, we have ownership of the documents.
Okay. But there were also a lot of other things that were incorporated in the other submittal that aren't gonna be done, that I think we should also think about in terms of extra potential cost, the engineering side of it, some other things that I think were pretty important that I don't know how much that would cost. I, I'm not a planner either, so I don't know. And I don't know how, how, Kirsten, you might be able to answer this. In terms of hiring somebody to do QC, would it be, get us crosswise if somebody did QC on this document that was part of the other team? Or are we gonna be limited in terms of who we can choose?
So I don't think that you'll be limited in who you can choose. You may want to consider when you make this, so not from a legal perspective, anyway. Some things that you may want to consider are, okay, you have two bidders and one of them was awarded the bid. And then if you give to the other one to do a quality assurance check, you may get slightly biased opinion regarding...
Sure.
Whether or not this is adequate. We're product is sort of, not to say that the other bidder would do that. Certainly not casting aspersions on anyone. But just something to consider. So you may want to look at someone that was uninvolved in the process for that reason.
Because I remember there was somebody on their team that we currently have a contract with to do planning support and, you know, that might make it less cumbersome. But, okay. Yeah, I feel really strongly that we need to get somebody else to look at the document.
I'll let her take a motion. Nobody else has any questions? Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept Resolution twenty-five dash O as read.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comment on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howell?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Passes four-one. Okay. Moving on to City Attorney Report slash Update. Welcome back.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being able to come back. Just a couple of updates on some of the other items. We had a pretty packed agenda this week, so there are a couple of items that you'll see on your next meeting. The Swamp Bots leased the Special Magistrate contract. And then we will also have your first reading of the alcohol ordinance as edited from your comments. So those are the things that you'll see on the next agenda.
Manager Marshall?
So as I spoke earlier about the priest bid, once the contract's been drawn up and everybody agrees on it, the state requires approval before executing. So you may still see a pause after you approve the bid, or not approve the bid, but once the bid gets, it is approved, I'm sorry. It is approved, so you will still see a pause because we gotta wait for the state architect to say it's okay to move forward. But you should see construction happening soon. And reminder, Fall Festival is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, starting at ten a.m. on both days. And that's all I have for your report.
Commissioner comments?
I got nothing.
You know, I've got a couple of things. I went to the Joint Water and Climate Board meeting today where there were actually four people that were recommended for appointment and they chose me. So thank you very much. I will be participating with that, that group. And I genuinely appreciate the opportunity to do that. So I thank you, gentlemen, for giving me that opportunity. I had a question about the mayor's youth council. We've only used thirty-five percent of their budget and I know that they would love to start meeting again. And I don't know if there's plans for that.
I think we have. Jamie, where are we at with that? I saw the email.
So I did reach out to the youth council today. Actually, we were trying to make it through September for obvious reasons. I asked them about the month of October. Chairwoman White's advised that Wednesday has worked best for her. So once I hear back from the youth council, we can hopefully get a plan going forward.
That'd be great. Because I remember you had the idea that they could have a pickleball tournament to raise funds. And then that would be amazing to do, if that, if that would work. Because they wanted to award scholarships for local youth and that would be, be really cool. And they wanted to tutor. And you've got some really energetic folks there, so I would, would love to see them getting going again.
Hey, we have a new member.
We've got a couple of new members that need to be sworn in that have not been sworn in. So, yeah, that would be great. And Vice Mayor Miller has given me the opportunity, and I really appreciate this, for, for announcing Employees of the Week on a very personal note.
Just this week.
Sorry, sorry.
Just this week.
Just this once.
You can have it once, you can't have it all the time.
I had the need for emergency services for my eighty-nine-year-old mother. And we called nine-one-one. And before I was even hardly out to the easement, Rebecca Creach and Matthew Hubbard were right there. I'm not sure I could thank you enough for what you did. I'm not sure I could thank you enough for what you did. And for Chief Theis. He has a young paramedic at a Station Twenty by the name of Drew that rode in the ambulance with my mother. He's new to the industry, and his professionalism, his compassion, and his caring, when her blood pressure was one-ninety-seven over a hundred, we were in the ER at two-thirty in the morning, and she's still, she was still talking about him. And he said he was very new to this job, he hadn't been working there for very long, but he and Rebecca and Matthew were difference-makers for my family, so I just want to thank you. That's all I got.
All right, this past Friday, the Lions Club invited me out to karaoke night, so I just wanted everybody to know, every Friday night at the Lions Club from six to ten, they have karaoke night, it's a good time, so you should go out.
What was your go-to song?
Benny and the Jets. That is my go-to, and if you ever see a video of it, you would not know it's me. I, I will rock Benny and the Jets.
Commissioner Miller, what was your go-to song? Did you get up there and perform with them?
Yeah, I did, sang that song. I can't think of what that song. What you wanna do for love, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Bobby Caldwell, you can't beat it. I'm sure many of you know, Friday night, we lost a young man from the high school, and, you know, it's, it's when things like that happen, that all this stuff on social media and whatnot really doesn't matter. So go home, kiss your family, kiss your babies, you know, tomorrow's not promised. So, I hope everybody, I hope, you know, we all say a prayer for that young man's family, eighteen years old, hell of a lot of life ahead of him, and he won't graduate this year, because they're gonna go to another kind of, yeah, it's tough, so, you know, let's put it in perspective.